I see Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Out of an abundance of caution, the city attorney has asked me to recuse myself from item 37, as my wife's employers have worked with organizations on that project.
All right.
Item 37.
Whoever is disrupting the meeting, this is your first warning. If people shout out or disrupt these proceedings in any way, you'll get a warning and then you'll be asked to leave summarily and not come back. Mr. Price is recusing on item number 37. All right, so that's been noted. Councilmember Yaroslavsky.
Thank you, Council President. I am asking that we move to note and file item number 25. Yesterday Governor Newsom announced that Cal OES has expedited the deployment of over $76 million in...
If we cannot proceed, we're gonna clear the chamber.
So, members of the public, we need to continue this meeting as a part of city business. So if you are not, if you do not quiet down and allow us to continue this meeting, you will be subject to Rule 7 and Rule 12 and removed from this meeting.
We're gonna ask everyone putting up signs. We're gonna ask everyone that's putting up signs and shouting out to lower your signs so everybody can see and to not shout out. And we'll allow, we're gonna allow the council member to continue. Councilmember Yaroslavsky. Sergeant, we've asked this person with a sign right along the middle aisle to put their sign down. You're refusing to put your sign down. We'll excuse you from the meeting.
Seventy-six million dollars in...
I understand that there are a lot of people who want to talk about this item. The only way that you're going to be allowed to speak about this is if you're still in the meeting for general public comment and public comment on the item. So, I would ask that everybody please remain quiet so that you can stay in this meeting and you will be given your time or opportunity to speak during general public comment. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Yesterday... That's not allowed. That's not allowed.
And we're trying to get the work done. If you will allow the work to proceed, we can move our business. Councilmember Yaroslavsky, for the third time.
So I'm being told that Richie Sardenko is one of the people who keeps interrupting this meeting. So Mr. Sardenko, this is your first and only formal warning. If you continue to disrupt this meeting, you will be subject to removal pursuant to Rule 7 and Rule 12.
Yesterday...
One more time.
How many more times are we gonna do this?
Yeah, we're gonna do this one more time and then we're gonna have to do this without an audience if it continues.
Yesterday Governor Newsom announced that Cal OES has expedited the deployment of over $76 million in state nonprofit security grants, with the application period opening yesterday. Given that this motion was originally intended as a stopgap to expedite this funding, with the anticipation being that we would receive state reimbursement when available, this motion is no longer needed. I want to thank the governor and the Jewish caucus for their leadership in getting this done and for recognizing the urgency of this funding. To reiterate what I said when I introduced this motion last month, the violence we saw on June 27th at Adas Torah was not...
One more outburst. The next outburst will go into recess and conduct this business without an audience since this audience can't seem to allow business to proceed. One more time, Councilmember Yaroslavsky.
The violence wasn't the first of its kind and it won't be the last. Securing this funding nonprofit security group, for nonprofit security groups is...
All right, sergeants, can you please? So the gentleman in the back row with, I believe he's wearing a gray baseball cap and has a mustache, this is your first and only formal warning. Do not disrupt this meeting. For every member of the public who is here who is currently disrupting this meeting or has been, we've provided multiple warnings. We need to move on with the council meeting, which includes general public comment. We are unable to do so because of the hissing and the yelling. So please keep your voices down while the council members are speaking. Thank you.
Securing this funding for nonprofit security groups is critically important, but it's just one part of the work we must do to make sure all of our communities are able to gather and worship in peace. First, we're gonna be pushing the appropriate city leaders to offer technical assistance to local institutions seeking state funding. My office and Councilmember Blumenfield's office are also consulting the city attorney's office on how we can institute buffer zones around the entrances to religious institutions and other sensitive sites like Planned Parenthood. Finally, we're working with the city attorney on clarifying LAPD protocols for managing protests so that there's a transparent and clear set of expectations for everyone to follow, including law enforcement. I'm gonna close. I want to close by thanking all the organizations who have been working on this really important issue in not only my community, but all of the communities of Los Angeles. We all have religious institutions and communities that don't feel safe right now. I want to thank the Jewish Federation, the Simon Wiesenthal Center, and my colleague Bob Blumenfield, and all of you for your partnership over the past month and a half as we've worked together to protect all of our communities in Los Angeles during what are incredibly challenging times as we're seeing right now. The polarization is incredibly intense and we shouldn't be seeing that playing out on our streets. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember.
Is there a second to this motion?
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Padilla.
And every single time I knew of a kid in our district, one who's very close to me, who made the job and went into the tower, you always said the same thing. Give him my number. Give that person my number, that young woman my number, that young kid my number. Because you is really embedded in you that you want to bring up the next generation of public safety officers, of firemen for decades to come. And it was you did that. And the 41 years that you gave to the city will not be forgotten, not by generations of firefighters in the city of Los Angeles. So you've made a name...
Alejandro Lombardo, Andrew Grabner, Claudia Brown, Donald Harlan, Stacy Bowlinger, Woo Sun, Anna Ho. May you please line up to your left side?
Good morning.
I'll just do general comment. Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
All right, first of all, I'd like to remind you that the council rules do in fact allow signs. That is specifically allowed by the council rules. So I mean, I guess you're withdrawing this motion. I'm not sure how it works, if Newsom's just giving money, but if it does come through the city, you need to reject any of those funds. And you need to stop lying about what happened. The ones who were violent were the pro-genocide people who were attacking the people protesting. It was an event where they were selling off stolen land. But you keep claiming that it was a, you know, anti-Semitic thing or whatever. And you keep lying about it. And this motion was born out of a, you know, meeting with an Infowars host. I mean, you know. And Kevin needs to resign.
Thank you, Groot. Good morning to you too. I'd like to speak on all items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I'll begin with item 20. So for those who don't attend these meetings often, when we talk about CEQA, C-E-Q-A, what that stands for is California Environmental Quality Act. So we see CEQA exemption approvals and appeals a lot on these agendas. And it seems like we have these structures in place, but then when they become inconvenient, we just say they don't count. And that's not very strong policy with regard to the environment. And I would like to echo the concerns of the appellant and the other gentleman that was just up here. Rules only work as far as they're enforced and there's no enforcement on these guidelines. And you cannot trust developers or profit seekers to follow rules when they're seeking money. So let me go on to some other items that are business improvement districts and rent escrow account programs. So business improvement districts are meant to revitalize areas by incentivizing businesses and providing that area with things like augmented sanitation services and quote-unquote beautification. And that all sounds nice in theory, but my issue is that we incentivize, again, profit-seeking, but then there's no follow-through on recourse making sure that the businesses we're subsidizing are providing services that lots of people can enjoy. So rather than a high-priced fine dining restaurant, a fast casual place where you don't have to work six hours to afford one meal, or instead of like a medispa where you get Botox, like an actual clinic where people can get necessary healthcare services. So while we're working on these business improvement districts, let's actually look at the services these businesses are providing and are they actually paying wages so their workers can live nearby work? So let's go to the rent escrow account program items. When landlords do not live up to their end of the contract, do the tenants get a break on rent? No, landlords put money in a secret account that no one gets to touch and then once they meet abatement requirements, they get all that money back. So I like to use the analogy of if I'm serving you at a restaurant and you order a milkshake and a burger and fries, and I bring you the fries and a glass of water, do you think you're still going to have to pay for the milkshake and the burger even though you didn't eat them? Do you think it would be fair for me to tell you, you still have to pay and I can collect on that as long as I get it to you anytime I want? That doesn't make sense in the real world, but this is how landlords get to do business because our council body works for property owners and not workers or renters.
General public comment?
Taking this motion off today won't stop the people who've come here to say, "We don't like these violent things that we've read." You're gonna give Magen Amm state funds instead? And I'm just a guy yelling, "Free, free Palestine!" Why can't Nithya say genocide? Oh, I'm just a guy standing with my comments trying to get this elected body on our side. Oh, we've had it up to here. I'm just a guy in a play to fund an apartheid regime. Oh, I'm just a guy. If I get raped by a Jew, the Zionists say it's not a crime. Oh, I'm just a guy. What am I to do about Bob and Katie and their line? Oh, are we making ourselves clear? Fuck Zionism! Fuck Magen Amm! Free Palestine!
Next speaker.
So, members of the public, we have somebody at the podium who would like to give their public comment. So please do not disrupt their public comment. We need to continue with this meeting. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Very quick, city attorney, what I'm trying to ask earlier is during the general public comment...
So, speaker, this is not a Q&amp;A session. This is your opportunity to speak to this body. So which items would you like to speak to?
Everything.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Number 11 is about South Figueroa Street for lien. I am on the side of the contractor because as a homeless residence in the Figueroa Street, I know firsthand experience, majority of the house are not paid for what a lot of squatters operating secret services inside of the Figueroa Street. A lot of the people hire contractors, but they were never paid. So I am here to talking about for the appeal and then for this agenda. And then the reason why I want to appeal is I know there are so many illegal operations in Figueroa Street, which is this council, this council, this city continue to ignore. And then for me, speaking numerous times about the illegal activity, nobody care. Number 25 is about Blumenfield implement community safety enhancement. You already know before I speak, I support anything that is community safety because I know in Figueroa Street is not safe. Why it's not safe? I don't know, because that's not my job. Why those people on the sidewalk continue to stop the car? How is that safe? Why those people still standing on the side of the street wearing a bikini in the winter and then soliciting whatever services they offer? Is that safe? We have tourists, we have high school kids, we have middle school kids pass through those neighborhoods on a daily basis and they will continue to be offered of those Figueroa services. Is that safe? Number 35. 35 is another Figueroa Street item, the rent escrow account. I do not support this agenda. I do not support this motion because I do not believe it should be removed because I do not believe the property owners are fixing the street, are fixing the whatever, a broken toilet inside of the property. There could be a broken toilet, there could be a broken floor, there could be a broken air conditioning, there could be a broken kitchen. But if all those services are not being restored, repaired, and then I do not believe this property should be removed from that account.
General public comment?
General public comment today, I want to, the reason why I'm asking earlier is LAPD, it is under the jurisdiction of this council and LAPD officer is under the jurisdiction of this council. So I can, without any doubt, speak LAPD, LAPD officer with my general comments because it is under the jurisdiction of the LAPD, therefore under the jurisdiction of the city. So I am here to support the LAPD and the salary because I have heard hotel workers getting 20% increase. I have heard, you know, a fast food restaurant worker getting 25% increase, but last year LAPD got 8% increase and I do not believe that's equal. I believe that LAPD should receive equivalent of 20%, 25%, the equal as those hotel worker and the fast food restaurant worker.
Speaker, your time has expired. For everybody who's hissing, again, I know that there's a lot of people here with different views and this is your opportunity to express those views, but I would ask that you please be respectful to the person at the podium regardless of their views. You will have an opportunity to address it during your public comment.
You're defending racists, right?
Go ahead.
Just want to make that for the record.
Which item would you like to speak to?
125 and general public comment.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
All right, so we all know that the D in bid is for displacement as is spelled out in automating banishment from the Stop LAPD spying coalition. Business improvement districts are nothing more than fronts for fascism. Now bids make use of LAPD relationships to localize and narrow the focus of policing against individuals in Africa town. They will prey on anyone that dares to stand up against the pig power structure and the many ways it infiltrates our community. Now while bids appear to be public entities, they are in fact privately run. Bids help expand the reach of LAPD's architecture of surveillance and they embed policing even deeper in the property interests of developers, businesses, and landlords. Bids hire private security that double as a personal police force for local property owners as well as an auxiliary police force for the LAPD. We've already seen how the new metro line has led to an influx of pigs in our community and voting to establish this bid is one of the last strongholds of black people in Los Angeles is auctioning off our hoods to a veracious businessman, the demagogic politician and the racist pig cop. Now item 25, it's not lost on the public that this body wants to, wanted to address what it claims was an immediate need to financially support former IOF and US military to quote-unquote "counter unfettered violence in Jewish communities," but that same sense of urgency mysteriously evaporates as a genocide plays out in front of our eyes in Gaza. Now we recognize that you are still committed to putting city resources behind Zionist militias like Magen Amm. You all want to gift money to war criminals, which is not out of the ordinary since you constantly do that with LAPD. Now Magen Amm means the nation's shield, but what nation are they shielding? The genocidal state of Israel. They were an active participant at the Zionist attack at the UCLA Palestine Solidarity Encampment. They are violent vultures who claim that the sale of stolen land in Palestine that was signed off by the Adas Torah synagogue had nothing to do with the protests they helped brutally suppress. Huey P. Newton once said that Israel was created by Western imperialism and is maintained by Western firepower and here in Los Angeles, this council continues to fuel those fascist flames. Moving on to my public comment. Now I watched yesterday...
Okay, you have one minute.
Kevin DeLeon called Najee Ali our city's greatest warrior of justice. The same Najee Ali who had a video leak out of him physically abusing his wife last July. The same Najee Ali who's been arrested for rape three times and was pushed out of the National Action Network for beating his wife. The same Najee Ali who admitted in court to choking a woman during sex, intimidating her and harassing her, leading to that woman getting a restraining order against him. The same Najee Ali who told Al-Dir Hamid Khan that he hoped that he wouldn't blow up the police commission meeting shortly after blaming the widower of Radel Jones for her death instead of the LAPD. That's who you praised yesterday. That's who you praised yesterday, Monica Rodriguez. That's who curated that presentation you showed so much love to, Nithya. One of the people mentioned yesterday was Muhammad Ali. And for the record, in 1974 Muhammad Ali visited a Palestinian refugee camp in Lebanon and said that "The United States is the stronghold of Zionism and imperialism. I declare support for the Palestinian struggle to liberate their homeland and oust the Zionist invaders." So if you want to honor Muslim Americans, then you should stand on the side of justice. You should be standing against genocide.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker. Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Yes, Richie Sardenko, items 125 and general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Well, it's so good to see all of you. It's been a while. I'm off diversion now, so I'm gonna be in here, you know. It's unfortunate. I was hoping Katie was gonna be in the room. Everyone just looking down at their phone, no big deal, but we'll talk about it anyways. It's good that this item 25 was pulled off the agenda, but the people will be following and watching and the pressure will stay on. We need to reject that funding, you know, for Zionist militia groups like Magen Amm. And city council needs to stop lying about what happened that day, just like what happened at UCLA, it was the Zionists that attacked the protesters. And you all have more concern for the people that were selling stolen Palestinian land than the hundreds of UCLA students that were attacked by Zionists on campus. City council continues to flame, fuel the flames. It's been a while since I've done public comment, damn. City council continues to fuel the flames of imperialism and fascism right here in Los Angeles. Fuck LAPD, fuck the IDF, and free Palestine.
Yes, August Willett speaking to item 25.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item. Go ahead.
In short, I just want to remind everybody what a constitutional crisis it would create if you guys gave funds to IDF soldiers. That's literally foreign soldiers on American soil and if they attack student protesters, if they attack our friends, we have a constitutional right to use up to lethal force to stop them. Foreign troops on American soil, not okay.
Good morning. Again, so the gentleman who's shouting out right now...
This is your first and second warning to the gentleman shouting out in the black t-shirt with small white writing.
The left-hand side of the council chambers from our perspective. So, good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Christina Johnson, I would like to make public comment and speak on 25.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the item.
First, I'd like to say if you could please look at your constituents when we were talking to you. I'm an anti-Zionist Jew here with Ayatzi members for Palestine and Jewish Voices for Peace. We strongly oppose the now $76 million in funding to armed security for wealthy West LA neighborhoods when we should be prioritizing safe and stable housing to protect our unhoused neighbors from Gavin Newsom's inhumane executive order that further criminalizes homelessness, giving law enforcement the green light to sweep encampments, but where are they to go? LAPD's 2024 and 2025 budget is $3.37 billion, while the budget for housing is $231 million, a 31% decrease in funding. Why does the city need to give additional resources to private security who aren't subject to the same oversight and accountability as city police? We all deserve safety. Magen Amm security? I have one more minute.
General public comment?
Thank you. Magen Amm security is not the answer and shame on you for weaponizing antisemitism to push white supremacist agendas that make the streets of LA unsafe for the rest of us. Cease fire now and stop spending our money on racist shit.
My name is Benjamin. I'm a graduate student in art history and Jewish studies at UCLA, an organizer with Jewish Voice for Peace, a member of UAW 4811, and a Jewish youth educator. I'm here today rooted in the values of justice, equality, and dignity for all people. I'm here today because I believe that everyone from Pico Robertson to Palestine deserves access to safety and community. While I understand the motion to fund armed private security forces whose extremist views have been well documented has been withdrawn, we must reckon with how increases in militarized policing contribute to an authoritarian political culture at the expense of our civic rights, the health and well-being of our communities, and our democracy. Antisemitism is a real and pressing issue, one that I and my peers oppose as part of our organizing for social justice. However, the use of antisemitism to denigrate the actions of those of us who stand up for justice and to justify more guns on our streets wielded by people who espouse and enact on supremacist...
General public comment?
Thank you. Who espouse and act on supremacist views not only does nothing to keep Jews and others in our community safe, but also makes it harder for those of us seeking to address antisemitism to do so in a manner that respects the rights of all. We need resources to go to the social services that truly make our communities safe: housing, healthcare, food, education. We need our spaces for Jewish communal gathering to not be desecrated by discriminatory real estate fairs that promote ethnic cleansing in historic Palestine. We need all LA institutions to end their complicity in Israeli occupation and apartheid. We need councilmembers Yaroslavsky and Blumenfield to account for this initiative that endangers all of us. Free Palestine.
My name is Bumblebee and I'm here to speak for general comment and item 25.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item.
All right, I'd like to start by saying I'm happy that the item got polled and I'm happy that that means that at most Magen Amm will receive $1.5 million less than it would have had the council pushed it through with this motion. That being said, I don't think they should receive even the $500,000 to which they're eligible under the grant program. I think it would be irresponsible to fund a group of people who violently attacked members of our community at UCLA. As an incoming UCLA graduate student, I fear for my safety because I, for no reason other than the fact that I don't want to see mass murder, right? My desire to see the end of US and LA complicity in genocide makes me feel unsafe in this city. For general comment, I'd like to talk about how there are empty chairs and council members looking down at their phones. I have seen council members without looking up once during public comment. I would like to propose that this... I would like to propose that this council consider a resolution that would tie councillor pay to their attention during public comment. I cede the rest of my time. Fuck LAPD, free Palestine.
Good morning.
All right, this is the third warning from Mr. Sujenko. We should proceed, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, so he is eligible for removal pursuant to rule seven and rule 12.
As the chair of this meeting, I'm invoking the removal of Mr. Sujenko.
Mr. Reedy, this is your first and only formal warning. Please do not disrupt this meeting. We have a member of the public who would like to speak on the items.
Second warning, we'll excuse the gentleman in the back.
As stated by the chair, yes, that was an ongoing offense. So, yes, so Mr. Reedy has been excluded from this meeting pursuant to rule seven and rule 12. Good morning, speaker. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
My name is Adam Palermo. I signed up to speak on item number 25 and general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item.
Okay. First of all, I'm happy that item 25 was withdrawn, but the premise of what it was signed for in the first place as the premise to protect houses of worship is a false narrative. Nobody was there to protest Judaism. Nobody was there to protest congregations or the synagogue what was going on. There was a violation of international law and a war crime, and we were there to protest that and holding Jewish identity hostage to put the facade of it being a synagogue. They desecrated that space. It's no longer a holy space. What we should be using our city resources for is investigating that synagogue and the people that organized it for participating in international war crimes on US soil here in our city and investigating Karen Bass for allowing that to happen under her supervision here in Los Angeles. And we should be investigating MAG and AM.
General public comment?
We should be investigating MAG and AM as being composed of foreign ex-IDF soldiers who pose a threat to US citizens as well as Jews here in LA that are anti-Israel, anti-Zionist. You guys are not trying to defend Judaism. I've seen people that are Jewish on our side at UCLA being assaulted by Zionists. I've seen people at Pico Robinson that are Jewish being assaulted by Zionists. You're not protecting Jews, you're choosing which side you're protecting with that money. I want to say, I want to say, free Palestine and fuck Kevin DeLeón. I yield my time.
The city council is shameful. Most of you aren't even listening to what we're saying. Need I remind you that where your constituents, we vote you in. The city of LA does not approve of this insidious funding. Shame on the city council for even introducing this motion, and shame on Newsom for funding it. These ex-IOF soldiers will end up killing Angelenos. Additionally, stop lying about what happened outside that synagogue. Nobody was there to attack religious practice or Jewish people. People were there in protest of land theft, and violence came from Zionists and police. Lastly, the city council needs to pass a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Good morning. If you could please remind...
Good morning. MAGA and AM 25.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just going to make some points. I'm not going to make a bit-long speech, but anyway, on the issue of Jaroslawski, I want to say that, to begin with, they make claims that there's antisemitism going on, but I'm here to say that she's not even a Jew and she's not a Semitic. Jaroslawski, the ending of the name, "ski," means the son of Jaroslav. In Jaroslav, you see the name Slav, means Slavic, and Jar is the name of a... And Jar...
So, please, please hold his time.
And Jar...
Hold on, speaker, we're going to, we're holding your time. So, members of the public, I know you've heard me say this multiple times during this meeting, but please be respectful to the other speakers regardless of their viewpoint. You need to give them time to speak. Every time we pause to give warnings and to let people know that you're disrupting this meeting, it takes away time for potential speakers in the future. So, please, please be respectful to the speakers while they're at the podium. Sorry, sir, go ahead.
Gray shirt, black mask, first warning.
Go ahead, restart his time, or not restart, sorry, start his time again.
Okay, and the first part of Jar belongs to the name of a pagan Slavic god, Yarilo. Okay, so Jaroslav means the pagan god, Yarilo, Jaroslav, the Slav, and ski means the son of...
And speaker, your general public has expired, comment has expired. So, next speaker. Good morning. So, good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
And 25.
Okay, and before you begin, I'm going to ask you to turn down the volume on your phone. This is for an opportunity for you to speak to the body, not to play an audio recording.
Well, that's, you know what? Nobody says it better than Mclemore Henshall, because right now, this is Henshall. This is for Hens. 21 and 20, I want to talk about general public comment and 25. Lydia Ponse, Venice, California. I'm a grandma, an indigenous grandma, and you know what? It is deplorable, the decisions that you're making on lies, lies. Children have been massacred. You all have blood on your hands.
Speaker, this is your last warning. Please do not play audio into the microphone. This is your opportunity to speak to the body, not to play music or a video.
It's free speech. It's free speech. It's my free speech.
So, again, it's your speech, not the playing of the audio during public comment. So, you've been warned multiple times.
Are your ears bleeding? Do you have your limbs? Do you have your heart beating?
Speaker, your time is forfeited.
Your time is forfeited. Thank you so much. Please leave the podium.
Speaker, please vacate the podium so we can move on to the next speaker. Again, we have a lot of people here who would like to provide public comment. Speaker, who was just at the podium with the blue hair, this is your first and only formal warning. Please do not disrupt this meeting. Speakers, we need to move on with the next speaker. So, okay, good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Hi, I'm Nati Casanova. I live in CD14. I'm not sure where Kevin DeLeón is, Councilmember DeLeón, but I'm here to speak on all items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead with the items first.
Yeah, I understand that, you know, you've moved this motion, this item 25, to special, and it's just basically Gavin Newsom is bailing you guys out on this because obviously, the people of LA don't want that money to go to a Zionist militia. And there is, you know, there is going to be a lot of scrutiny on any money that goes from state, you know, state funds to this group because it is discriminatory. It discriminates on people. If they're getting $500,000 from this grant, then Jewish Voice for Peace should get $500,000. Other organizations, other Jewish organizations in Los Angeles or in the state in general should be also getting the same amount of money. I just have to say, like, I think it's awful. Like, yesterday, you guys are up here talking about Muslim Heritage Month, performative allyship, and yet you're all, you know, you were all supporting this Zionist motion to give, like, it's a racist motion to just give money to people who are actually committing the violence. These are nonviolent protests. We're protesting violence.
So, speaker, you've exhausted your minute on this item. You can continue during general, but if you'd like to talk about other items, please move on for now.
I just personally would like to say, also, I think it's, you know, I'm part of the animal rights groups that come up here a lot. We've worked on the rodeo ban last year, which, by the way, we're still waiting for that to be passed. I tried to say on the phone...
Respectfully, speaker, this isn't going to be a general public...
This is general public.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Trying to get, we'd like to get that passed, right? By the way, violent crime is still happening around the rodeo when it's happening at the crypto arena. I'll give you guys new research on that. But I have worked with, Bob, I've worked with your councilmember Blumenfeld, excuse me, I've worked with your office with the Coalition for this rodeo ban. I know that you have compassion for other non-human animals. It's just disheartening to me that you would put forward a motion like this that is so discriminatory. It's predicated on the oppression and apartheid of, you know, indigenous people in the region, and it is painful to me to see as another, like, animal lover and animal rights activist, to see people that claim to care about other sentient beings and do a lot of work for them to not care at all about people in Palestine facing a genocide and ethnic cleansing. It is ethically inconsistent. It is selective empathy, and it is, it's not right. Please. Also, pass a ceasefire resolution in Los Angeles. We need that.
All right, so here I have a video of them shooting fireworks at us at UCLA. Here I have a thousand cops at UCLA. Why the fuck do we need more cops here or any militia? Here's a group of Zionists harassing us at UCLA, and everybody look at them. Look at him right now. Look at, look at them over there. Look at them. They're not listening. You know why? Because they don't give a fuck about the people. You don't give a fuck about the people. Bro, you're black. How are you not, how are you pro-clonialism?
Speaker, this is not on the agenda. I'm going to ask that you stick to the agenda item, or you can move to general public comment if you'd like.
You're Latin people in here, Asian people in here, indigenous, and you guys are pro-pro-clonialism? For real? For real? Y'all sellouts, and we all know it. I just showed you videos of fireworks, Zionists harassing us, and y'all don't give a fuck about that. That's crazy. But you want to spend $2 million to bring the IDF here? You guys, do you see the future right here? This is the future, and y'all haven't seen it? We're about to take over all this shit and y'all don't realize it.
General public comment?
Public comment. Let's say this. Realize what you guys are supporting. The whole world is against this shit. The whole world, ICJ, Doctors Without Borders, Amnesty, everybody. You should be ashamed of yourselves. We're watching kids getting bombed, and you guys want to look down on your phones and talk? And, I mean, I get the white people, y'all are going to do what you're going to do, but come on, your ancestors, your ancestors, your ancestors, your ancestors. For real? I thought y'all fought for civil rights. I thought y'all fought for real shit, because right now, you're supporting apartheid. Wake the fuck up, Gen Z. Wake the fuck up. There's always going to be power in the people, and we, we'll see your faces. We have videos, we have posts, we're going to know your faces forever. Your kids, we're always going to know. So, power the people, fuck white supremacy.
First of all, I'd like to let you know that I work at the Public Library, Little Tokyo Branch Library. We're one of the few places that provide resources for the unhoused, and I'm honored to work there, honestly. I'm there to help people. We're one of the few services that provide, you know, for people who have nothing, but it's really not enough. I see people dying there, overdosing in the bathroom, and all I do is shelve the books. But I just want to say that I really, I think that LA is a really great city. There's a lot of great people here who care about people around the world, especially in Palestine right now, and we don't need money going, allocated to private security firms. That money should be going to resources for the mentally unwell. We need to rehabilitate our communities. We need mental wellness. We need medicine. We need art. We need education. We need music, and we need philosophy, and we need more love in this room. And I know inside of you, you're fighting to understand, and you want to care about your fellow man.
My name is Leah. I'm a resident of Council District 10, a constituent of Councilmember Hutt. I'm also a graduate student at UCLA and a member of UAW 4811. Katie Jaroslawski is pushing a disturbing and false narrative that protest against war crimes and the sale of stolen land is antisemitism, and she does not speak for all Jewish Angelenos and our safety. The motion was withdrawn, and I'm happy it was withdrawn, but it was withdrawn only because the money to fund private security for Zionist Jewish institutions is now coming from Newsom. $76 million to fund policing and guns on our streets while we're being told there isn't enough money for housing and education. Support for this funding, as Councilmember Jaroslawski has communicated, only emboldens, only communicates to your constituents that opposition to genocide should be met with violent repression, communicates that you think that's right. This funding only emboldens genocide supporters who have already received this city's blessing for violent attacks in the name of religion at UCLA and Pico Robertson. I've seen MAGA and AM and other armed security forces show up to protest, to harass and attack Jews such as myself and my friends standing in solidarity with Palestinians. This money for private security will help build an armed Zionist militia in Los Angeles, and this is really terrifying to me. So many of us are here today...
General public comment?
Because we recognize how dangerous it is to fund a private armed militia for our city and our community. Shame on Katie Jaroslawski. You do not speak for Los Angeles Jews.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Mathias Skidana, all items.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
I'm going to speak first about this Lamert Park bid, these business improvement districts. As other speakers have kind of mentioned, they are an effort by private businesses to displace community members. Specifically, if we think about Lamert Park, Afriktown, there is a significant history of organizing there to empower street vendors and unhoused people because they are often displaced and pushed out by brick-and-mortar shops and by gentrifiers that wish to make Lamert a not-black neighborhood, right? Primarily a white neighborhood. And as we talk about displacement, we have to talk about the displacement that goes on here in LA and bids, how they've kind of collaborated on that, especially when we think about Skid Row, right? And the Safer Cities Initiative that took place over there, and how bids were kind of weaponized to push people out in that same way. But displacement is something this city gets down with. Pushing unhoused people out is something this city gets down with, and that is also why the city is down with Zionism in a lot of ways, right? And I'm so glad Councilmember Blumenfeld walked in for this part, because I think we also have to talk about item number 25, which was pulled. And a lot of folks have brought up that the city's been silent on a ceasefire on the genocide going down in Palestine, but what a lot of people haven't brought up is how painfully embarrassing this must be for you, Bob Blumenfeld, and for Katie Jaroslawski, who's not even in the room. Because let's be clear, you manufactured a crisis. You relied on the conflation of antisemitism and antisemitism. You're laughing because people witnessed at that protest, a protest against a land sale at Pico and Robertson, that pro-Palestinians were brutalized, and yet you had the gall to introduce a motion with Jaroslawski to say that this was somehow a threat to Jewish safety. Thank God for the Jewish voices in the room denouncing that lie, right? Because we know now, after a pathetic attempt, six days after the fact, to water down that motion, to now make it all houses of worship, right? And to sneak this money through, doubling it through, you still have to give it up because the lie no longer works because of organizing by these young folks in the room.
So, speaker, you've exhausted your one minute on item 25. You can continue during general, but if you'd like to speak to another item, please switch now.
Okay, well, I don't see why you had to interrupt me with that. I could have kept speaking, and it would have been general public comment, but I think you like to pipe up, too. Yeah, just to say, you know, let's be clear, when we talk about MAGA and AM, when we talk about Zionist forces in our cities, we're talking about an army that routinely kills children, perpetuates a genocide, and right now is deliberating the legitimacy of rape, sexual assault as a tactic, and that's who you want to bring here. That's who you want to deputize, and they're already being deputized, right? These Zionist vigilantes that are allowed to run rampant and brutalize young folks at UCLA, the police don't stop them. What you're doing now is giving them the city stamp of approval and some state funding. Yeah, and just to say, we're going to shut the shit down anytime it pops up, but I need to amplify time and time again, you're living in a false reality. No one believes your bullshit anymore. You're losing. We are winning. This is embarrassing for you. This is a person who introduced a motion that would criminalize pro-Palestinian firing, comparing it to tying a noose in front of a black family's home. You're despicable, Blumenfeld. Jaroslawski, I don't know where the fuck you are, but you are too. I yield the rest of my time. Fuck you.
First, I don't understand how Dawson and Jaroslawski were laughing and talking while we were talking about Palestinian children and families being slaughtered. You find... You find this funny? Shame on you. I am a teacher and a mother. I don't understand how the racist fascist motion Jaroslawski and Blumenfeld had gained traction in the first place. It's unfathomable to me that you wish to suppress and criminalize freedom of speech, how you dehumanize our Palestinian and Arab brothers and sisters. Haven't we learned anything from our history? I don't understand how you wish to arm people who enthusiastically defend the brutality of countless children maimed and killed in Gaza and who are ideologically committed to the genocide of Gaza. Here in our own backyards at UCLA, the same Zionists you wanted to fund assaulted dozens of protesters. They attempted to rape our children. They put many in the hospital
General public comment?
with stab wounds and head injuries. Funding should be for housing our communities, feeding our children, and the emotional needs of our children. We are not antisemitic. We are anti-genocide. Supporting the suppression of our voices? You are demonstrating that you are anti-Palestinian, anti-Arab, and anti-humanitarian. Free, free Palestine!
The council members attempting to fund private security to target peaceful demonstrators still refuse to acknowledge what they are protecting. Israeli real estate companies using community synagogues to promote apartheid and ethnic cleansing while profiting off sales of properties in occupied Palestine. Jaroslawski and Blumenfeld identified Magen Am, an NRA-backed firm staffed by former Israeli soldiers and instructors with documented far-right ideologies, as one of the firms they plan to fund despite ample reporting and evidence of their extremist views. The International Court of Justice recently ruled that Israel's occupation is illegal and must immediately end with reparations paid to all displaced Palestinians. It violates both human decency and international law to continue hosting these land sale events. It is outrageous that our city council members want to hire armed guards to prevent the community from protesting land theft. Land theft! Land theft, ethnic cleansing, and apartheid are not Jewish values. Anti-Zionists seek a world in which Palestinians, Jews, and all people are safe and free. Jaroslawski and Blumenfeld attempted to legislate permission for our movement to end apartheid, ethnic cleansing, and land theft to be met with increased violence and repression. As anti-Zionist Jews speaking out against Israel's genocidal actions, we are experiencing increased discrimination, intimidation, and violence. Funding armed private security forces does nothing to protect us. In fact, it only emboldens violent pro-Israel counter protesters who evidence shows already have the blessing from law enforcement to attack us with impunity, as we saw at UCLA and again at Pico Robertson. Jaroslawski and Blumenfeld do not speak for all Jews, refuse to meet with all Jewish Angelinos seeking meetings, and as evidence shows, we do not speak to protect all of us either.
Next speaker?
In the motion that the state passed this week, there is a provision under Section 3 in which nonprofits cannot employ a security company who has had administrative action taken against them. So that means that this council still has the authority to take administrative action against these extremist groups like Magen Am, these groups that have shown extremist views and are known domestic terrorist organizations, and we could stop them. In addition to that, I also want to say for public comment that it says under the regulations for the way that the city council must conduct their meetings that all members have to be either seated or visibly present under some sort of teleconferencing. This is in Ralph V. Brown, and I'd like it to be stated that not all members are considered present by the current definition.
Ingram 25, and general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item.
I want to ask the council to agendize the ceasefire resolution. I don't know why that hasn't been agendized yet. I was at the Adas Torah synagogue on June 23rd. I saw Zionists spit on people and tell women they hoped they would be raped. I was nauseous from inhaling a cloud of chemical spray, but fortunately, I was not hit in the face with it like one young Jewish person that I walked with to the protest. Someone lost two teeth because they were hit with a rock thrown by a supporter of Israel. All the violence I witnessed on Sunday, June 23rd, was instigated either by Zionists or by the police that they appeared to be colluding with, just like the UCLA attack on the student encampment in which the police stood by for over three hours as a Zionist mob attacked the students with bats, chemicals, chemical sprays, and rats that they released into the encampment. Council members Jaroslawski and Blumenfeld wanted us to reward the instigators of this violence in both situations with $2 million, because apparently they are confused about who the real victims are. Some people don't feel safe, while Palestinians and their supporters are actually being assaulted and injured. The IDF is a racist, white supremacist organization, and the city council wanted us to give $2 million of our money to enlist their services. Sit with that. I see the city council is slipping back into its default posture of racism that you became so famous for in 2022. And if anything is making the Jewish community feel unsafe, it's the Zionist commitment to violence.
We see you. We see you.
My husband and I are Los Angeles residents, active voters, and taxpayers. Under no circumstances would we be aligned to our city, state, or federal tax dollars going to fund militias or ideologically-driven security services to patrol our streets. The ICJ has released an opinion since we were here a few weeks ago to discuss the issue in regards to illegal Israeli settlements. To be clear, the protesters who showed up at places of worship last month were protesting the illegal land sales being held there. Anglo-only land sales are in violation of our civil rights laws. Illegal settlements in occupied Palestine are in violation of international law. What this city council should be discussing is divesting from Israel's genocide and shutting down illegal real estate sales in our city. Instead, you are discussing funding militias to protect the illegal real estate sales. It is such
General public comment?
It is such a giant step toward tyranny. We've all seen security services and police provide less safety in these situations. Law enforcement already intermingles and consults with these militias. They proudly posted about it while brutally clearing the UCLA student encampment. Law enforcement consistently stands back while anti-genocide protesters are harassed and violently assaulted by counter-protesting mobs. We don't want even more of our tax dollars to be weaponized against us. We refuse to trade our real freedom for fake safety. Stop brutalizing your constituents. Free, free Palestine!
My name is Miguel Camnitzer, and I'm here with Jewish Voice for Peace. For several months, I've been hearing a lot from my elected leaders about what Jews like me need to feel safe. Forty thousand Palestinians have been murdered by the Israeli military, millions displaced from their homes, countless tortured in Israeli prisons. But you wish to brush that all aside and instead talk of how protesting a genocide makes some Jews in your districts feel uncomfortable. You suggest spending hundreds of thousands of dollars in public funds to hire former Israeli soldiers trained by the same military that is currently slaughtering Palestinians. Black, brown, queer, poor, and unhoused Angelinos are all disproportionately targeted for violence when the city increases policing and surveillance in the name of "safety." You're eager to make a majority of the city less safe just so a few Zionists can feel a bit more comfortable attending exclusionary Israeli real estate events to discriminate against our people, promote apartheid, and ethnic cleansing. Jaroslawski and Blumenfeld's motion was dangerous and irresponsible. You must be held accountable for your terrible judgment and failed leadership. Our leaders should be spending their energies figuring out how to prohibit these grotesque celebrations of land theft from setting up shop in our communities, not funding armed vigilantes to attack us. Jews of conscience know that none of us are safe until all of us are safe. We know that none of us are free until Palestine is free. Free Palestine!
Good afternoon. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Good afternoon. My name is Fernando, all items.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, comrades, fellow Angelinos. My name is Fernando. I wasn't going to mention it, but someone else just talked about it. So here it is. I was the one that got hit with a rock in the face. I had two of my teeth knocked out. I had two of my teeth knocked out that day. And they need security? Imagine feeling so entitled and to have such impunity that you're willing to launch a rock at a person's face. Coming on, my name is Fernando. I am a 37-year-old lifelong Angelino born and raised here in LA. I am also a Marine Corps veteran. I served this country from 2006 to 2010 to include a seven-month deployment to Fallujah, Iraq. I am here to condemn your wanting to allocate our money to ex-IOF soldier baby killers and to correct this despicable antisemitic narrative that you continue to spew. Shame on Jaroslawski for bringing it to the table and continuing to lie. On June 23rd, pro-Palestinian, anti-Zionist demonstrators showed up to Pico Robertson to protest the wrongful sale of Palestinian land.
Speaker, you've used your one minute on this item. You can continue during general if you'd like, but you said all items. So if there's another item you'd like to speak to, please switch now.
Well, there, demonstrators were met with aggressive attacks, and your police department, the infamous LAPD, just stood around and watched it.
So we're taking to his general public comment? You have one minute for general.
The next day, genocide Joe, Gruzen, Newsom, and baby killer Bass are publicly spewed this false narrative. They said demonstrators were there to interrupt the religious services and promote antisemitism, but that's far from true. Once again, they were there to reject and denounce Zionism, and it is driving forwards behind the current genocide of our Palestinian brothers. Shame on you for trying to allocate our funds to fuel this terrorist regime. Zionism is a secular colonial ideology and must be dismantled. Lastly, if you have the slightest bit of humanity, you can help us call for a ceasefire by agendizing a resolution in Palestine and Gaza. Free, free Palestine! Free, free Palestine!
If you're done with your comment, we need to move on to the next speaker. Next speaker?
Before the next speaker, I'm going to call a few more names.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Speaker. If you could please remind us... All right, so I'm going to start calling out names here. The gentleman in the tan shirt on the right-hand side with the black hair, this is your first and only formal warning. In addition to that, the gentleman in the pink shirt wearing
So sergeants?
red headband, this is your first and only formal warning. Please do not disrupt this meeting.
Jay Richardson, general public comment?
Good afternoon. You have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you for helping the part of the city that needed improvement. It's nicer.
Hi, city council members, liberals, and fascists. It's a damn shame that all you guys are supporting funding a Zionist militia here instead of funding these funds, allocating these funds to investigating the people who assaulted me and my friends at the UCLA encampment. It's not okay that these people are getting away with all this stuff, but yet you guys want to fund a literal terrorist organization to come over here and brutalize us. It's not going to help out the Jewish community. It's going to terrorize it even more. I feel like you guys know this, but a lot of you guys just don't give a damn. You guys are capitalist scums that only care about profit. You don't care about the working class of your constituents. It's a damn shame, because we all know this. And the more that you guys do this, the more fired up we're going to be. You guys think it's going to demoralize us? It's not. It's going to fire us, see, be more to come back here stronger? Yup, and we're not going to give up until Palestine is free. Fuck Kevin Delion, fuck Katie Jaroslawski, and fuck Bob Blumenfeld. All you guys deserve to go to The Hague. Free Palestine!
I'm absolutely against this idea of using city money to bring sociopaths here to brutalize people here. The reason I say that, I was following news on TV, and actually, most of the time that's ridiculous. You don't find out anything from commercial TV. But I tuned in to KCET, Amy Goodman's program Democracy Now! I saw footage for more than a month of what was really going on in Palestine. It was unbelievably awful. So there's no way we could support the Israeli Defense, whatever they're called. They don't defend anything. They murder people. They're sociopaths. They cannot come here. We cannot pay for them to come here. I'm appalled. Also, the way that students were brutalized across campuses was appalling. I once was a young student...
So general public comment? Go ahead. You can keep going if you'd like.
Okay, so we were out demonstrating against the war in Vietnam. That's all I have to say. So I really appreciate you. I appreciate you young people. Thank you. And the other thing is, what did I want to say? Oh, Mr. Biden, oh, President Biden, once made reference to the coming pandemic, another pandemic, but to not worry that he has the so-called vaccine in hand. It's been... I'm losing words. It under wraps, and we won't have a problem. But his only problem is the people don't cooperate. But he thought he might bring the military from Haiti here to give us a hand. So maybe they're going to keep these people around if we bring them here. I don't trust this. Okay, that's it. Oh!
Speaker, your time has expired.
One more thing.
Speaker? We have a lot of people here.
That's your time, ma'am. That's your time. You can hand any documents to the sergeant and allow the next person to come speak.
I'm a constituent of Councilwoman Ramon. I am also a Jew. Like all Jews, I oppose antisemitism. I also oppose the cynical weaponization of antisemitism as a means of stifling criticism of Israel's genocidal thuggery in the Gaza Strip. Why give Magen Am and groups like it millions? Haven't you shoveled enough money at the LAPD? And what did it do when a violent Zionist mob attacked the UCLA encampment? It stood around twiddling its thumbs for hours. This action does nothing to address antisemitism. At Adas Torah, as at UCLA, peaceful protesters suffered violence from a pro-Israeli mob. To portray the victims of violence as instigators and the instigators as victims is foolish and offensive.
You have general public comment?
Yeah. To give $1 million, or $67 million, or $1.75 to Magen Am and groups like it is, to use a Yiddish term, meshugah, which means crazy, and I strongly oppose it.
I'm a 71-year-old Jewish Angelino. My Jewish grandfather was named Cherkovsky. And like one of the other speakers just now, I've seen a lot of wars, and they don't make people safe. Paramilitaries on our street. People trained as soldiers. Paramilitaries on our street, people trained as soldiers, do not make anybody here safe. I think something that actually I wish you to consider would help make us safe is for all of the council people here to demand and push for the ceasefire resolution to be agendized and for you to vote for it, like almost every other city in our region.
General public comment?
Eighty percent of Democrats support a ceasefire. We need a permanent ceasefire as a way to also make us safe from Donald Trump. You've gotta help with this effort. The atrocities are spiraling and the war is now growing to Lebanon and Iran. Evidence beyond a reasonable doubt has now been given that Palestinian people are being swept up indiscriminately and sexually tortured, and that is being defended by government officials in Israel, and they are saying that a non-Palestinian cannot be raped, it's always a lesser crime. So please join your voices. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, I would appreciate it if I could get the attention of all of the city council members. Is there a way to make sure that the city council members are actually in the city? I understand, I understand.
So if you'd like to talk about that during general public comment, you can. I'm gonna ask that you stick to item 25 first, so...
Okay. I would appreciate it if the rest of this council would point out to the members that are missing the grievous injustice that it is to be missing during public comment for this kind of an event. I am a public school teacher in Los Angeles. On behalf of the young people I serve, I'm deeply disappointed with the members of this council who decided that they are willing to succumb to the pressure of far-right groups who incite violence within our communities. The precedent being set here is incredibly dangerous. And yes, I'm talking to you, Yaroslavski. The precedent being set here is dangerous. Freedom of speech should be sacred to us.
General public comment?
And yet here we stand on the edge of violence against people speaking against genocide, people you represent. If we are under threat for speaking the truth, what have you become as leaders? Are you so easily bought by your own greed and ambition? What kind of world are you leading my students into where you tell them that their right to protest can be threatened by their own government? You may have withdrawn the motion today, but your actions show you are only interested in protecting those with enough money to buy your ear and uphold a norm of supremacy. You continue to support violence against UCLA protesters, and there are still students who have charges against them. Your actions belay your lack of character and the depravity of your pocketbooks. This does nothing to address the real instigators of violence in our communities, and we will not rest while you continue to support the agents of genocide. I really hope you're listening.
My father and grandmother came over in the 50s from Jaffa, from Palestine, after the British mandated that Nazi Zionists come from Europe and clear us out of our homes. They came here, my father was in the military, they raised their family here in Southern California in peace and quiet finally, after their homes were stolen. Then, Adas Torah, on Pico Boulevard, you invite them to sell our homes! A criminal act in Los Angeles, and then you send the police to crack our heads open when we complain about it. My father came here for some peace and quiet, and you invite the Nazis here to Los Angeles to attack us! What kind of criminals are you? Kind of maniacs are you? You know what they're discussing in Israel right now? You know what the great debate is in Israel right now? It's not how they're ruining their reputation, it's not if they should end the genocide, it's whether their soldiers have the right to rape us to death! That's what they're talking about in Israel, and that's what you're bringing here! You're all scum, all of you!
I was here a couple of months ago, I'm a member of Code Pink San Pedro, and we were here protesting Fleet Week and the militarization of the L.A. harbor, and we were promoting Peace Week. We've been proven right that militarization of our country is at hand right now with the proposed money going for the militarization of our religious institutions. Do we really want the model of Israel here? How's that working for them? I am a Unitarian Universalist. The very symbol of my religion is a chalice with a flame in the middle that was used to help Jewish people and other victims of the Nazis escape Nazism in Germany. Ms. Yaroslavski, I was with the young people who were at the temple on the 23rd, I was with them on the 22nd. What we were doing is we were protesting the military industrial complex in El Segundo, Raytheon, Boeing, all of the weapons industry in our country, and they...
Speaker, you've exhausted your one minute on item 25.
Thank you, yeah, yeah. And for nine months of genocide against their people, nothing happened at a synagogue.
Would you like to move to general public comment? Would you like to move to general public comment where you can continue?
We'll move her into general public comment.
Speaker, you need to move to another item if you want to speak to the items, because you've used your one minute on item 25.
To another item. So the other item is, Ms. Yaroslavski, you and Mayor Bass were recently at an event where you were promoting homeless housing. That was wonderful, but you were heckled, and you were heckled by the NIMBYs in your district and could not talk about helping homeless people. You were heckled by the very same people that probably went to that synagogue and were trying to buy stolen land. And so, you know, you got a taste of your own medicine about what those kind of people are. People in this country, in this city, need to change and they need to evolve. This is the very same body, Los Angeles City Council, that shut down the South Central Farm. Your idea of land needs to completely change. Land is being stolen from the Palestinians, they're being murdered, people, three young... I'd like to have everyone vote. Would you like the $2 million going to these four women that need it?
Speaker, we've asked you politely to stay on topic. I'm gonna move you to your one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
And no more land grabs in our city. Vote right now to have no more of those real estate sales in this city. We are supporting selfish people, land grabbers in other countries, and here we cannot do it. Free Palestine!
Hi, I'm Timothy. I've lived in Los Angeles for six years. I was coming to speak today about how irresponsible spending $2 million of our money on the vague promise of reimbursement from the state would have been to fund armed Zionist militias in our streets, but Yaroslavski and Bloomfield somehow mustered up the sensibility and intelligence to know when to give up, cave to our pressure, and throw away their proposals to try and direct funds to the right-wing bigots at MAGA and AMN. To the other council members, I would think very hard, if I were you, about your relationships with these counselors, after how willfully they tried to circumvent both the Budget and Civil Rights Committee to take our money and use it in a way that would benefit them and their people. Thank you.
First of all, I am Jewish, but not a Zionist. I am a member of Democratic Socialists of America. I am here because, well, first of all, I was raised as a Jew to believe not just in the rights of Jewish people and the freedom for Jewish people, but freedom for everybody. And I'm here... I came for number 25 because, obvious, as everybody has said, an armed force from Zionist Israel is not going to make our streets safer. It really, I mean, the whole thing about religion coming back into the schools all around the country, pushed by the Republicans, this whole, this strikes the same, it has the same odor of religious groups being hired...
General public comment? Go ahead.
General comment? Okay.
You can continue.
Okay, I do want to urge the city council to pass, bring to agenda, the ceasefire issue, and I want to thank our three city council people who did put this on the, raised this resolution. So thank you, Eunice, and Ugo, and... Nithya, thank you. Okay, I can't talk about the 25 anymore. To build peace in L.A. and in Gaza, we need to see an end to genocide, and Los Angeles can do its part by passing the ceasefire resolution. We need to fight not just for an end to violence against various religions, but a violence against women and violence against African Americans.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker? Mr. Spindler, please come to the podium. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Before you start, it's time, hold on. So the two people who are standing in the back, one of them with the beard and one of them with a white mask, this is your first and only formal warning. Do not continue to disrupt this meeting or you'll be subject to removal.
Sergeant, the two men standing up in the back have been warned several times. We'll ask them, we'll excuse them from the meeting pursuant to the rules.
So the two people who are standing up initially, yes, the gentleman in the beard who you just pointed to has been warned multiple times and has been told that he's been removed from this meeting, subject to Rule 7 or Rule 12, and the, I believe, the woman next to her with the white mask as well. That goes the same for everybody else who's currently standing. You have been warned multiple times.
We'll ask all the folks who are standing to be removed.
The two gentlemen on the right-hand side of the council chambers, wearing the black shirt with the red squares, you've been warned multiple times and are subject to removal if the council president deems it appropriate. Everybody who is continuing to disrupt this meeting, please stop doing so.
All of the people standing are excused from the meeting, sergeants. They're all asked to leave the chambers immediately.
So in that group, at a minimum, it includes the two gentlemen in the front, one with the pink shirt and the white shirt, wearing the red and white covering over their head. And to the members of the public who are still watching and listening in, we are still waiting for it to quiet down so that we can continue at this meeting. Again, as we stated earlier, we understand that people have a lot of, are very passionate on both sides of this issue, but we need to be able to run an efficient meeting. So we appreciate those of you who are here who have remained quiet while other people are trying to speak. Okay, Mr. Spindler, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Yes, and proudly signing up as Mohammed Arta, yes. Number 25, look at the walkback by KFC, the Katie fucking cunt, look what she's done!
What happened?
She's trying to walk back her $2 million gift to the terrorist nation of Israel, look at this! So now, look at Eunice looking like she did that? Yes, because she's evil. But the most evil council member has always been Tracy Park from the beginning. That's why her name is there. And also, Lee, Lili is also there, Mr. Ethics. Are you gonna vote yes for this $2 million bullshit? How about you there, Melga Padilla? What about the Catholic Church that got their window broken? Do they get part of this money to secure their church? No, because you're too fucking stupid to put it in the motion, I read it! Yes. Now we'll get to the liens. I hate fucking liens, and I hate people who write liens, and I hate their mothers for giving birth to them, so let's get over this. Number one, I'm gonna buy queasy and sleazy hot on number one, shame on you. The business improvement is nothing but a fake tax. It's just a fucking fad, all of it. And number two, Kevin Lyon doing business as Kevin DeLeone, the one-term council member. Fuck number two as well. And then, of course, the felony suspect on number three. I wonder why Melga won't fix the lights on Woodley? And how come she allows a possible convicted felon to legislate? Don't you know the difference between criminals and yourself? What about number four, Monique Calcutrigus? Yes, a large fine, almost as big as her behind, but not quite $1,200.
So Mr. Spindler, you know the rules, I'm gonna ask you to stick to the items themselves.
Well, I mean, he's talking about the motion, right? The fucking...
Then talk about the motion, please. Go ahead.
Right, but the motion is authored by Monique Calcutrigus, and I'm saying that the amount of the fine is almost as large as she is. Isn't that on topic? Isn't that First Amendment protected speech? Or did you, you didn't go to law school? I thought you went to law school!
So this is your only warning? Stick to the agenda, I'm gonna move you to general public comment.
You studied some law, tell him he's wrong. Number five, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, don't interrupt me again. Now, number five, CD12, fuck CD12! Number two, well, fuck the rest of the items. Now we will get to the illustrious general comment period. As you see, Goat Puppet is not here today. He is going to negotiate a ceasefire on 77th and Figueroa. Let's give him a hand.
Oh, Lord! Wow!
It's right. The ceasefire will now hold for the next 24 hours as we try to clear all the prostitutes off of Figueroa and get these women back to their mothers. You know, that's what you're supposed to be doing here on this council, is saving girls from prostitution instead of giving $2 million fucking dollars to a terrorist organization, you fucking idiots! What the fuck's wrong with you? How about you, Bob, wiping your nose so impolitely while eating? Look at you, eating like a big pig! Look at, now drinking! Now he's drinking and eating, look at this fucking pig! Did you pay for that food? Look at this! So that's why we always knew that Katie was a cunt. Vote no on this agenda item and give the $2 million to the Goat Puppet Religious Fund.
Your time has expired. Next speaker?
Yes, thank you.
Can we start the time?
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Public comment for the record, like on item 25, for example. In mid-year, Rice and Equity Department decided to steal more money with these three fucking idiots, Bloomfield is one, Lee and Park. But what did Zevi do about the situation? Oh, she says, "I want to support nonprofit religions." Well, you're all going to hell, God hates you, Snyder versus Phelps, you're nothing more but a bunch of fucking simplify homosexual faggots, for the record, on 25.
Mr...
Yeah, and I'm going on, I'm going on to lien, you lien on me asshole. Pay attention, dickhead. Lien after lien. For example, CD14, and I know this is not because of Kevin DeLeone, because Kevin DeLeone's always uncompliant, he's not like that shithole indictment of Price. Then we go to item five for the record, fuck item number five. Look at item number six, safety report, fuck safety! You heard the report, the people here were screaming and yelling, and you did nothing to report! Dawson, you dumb nigger! Look at number seven, no, fuck number seven! That's about current price, a conflict of interest, another dumb nigger. Now we go into items on housing. What do you know about housing? Well, I'll tell you one thing about housing... Well, I'll tell you one thing about housing, it's not in California, that's for sure, because several dumb bitches in here, not to mention by name, but, you know, ever since I had my birria, I found out that dumb bitch is doing nothing about Tarzana, nothing about Encino, because of all these burglaries, because the dumb bitch is too busy trying to look purty. Purty, done shit, nothing right. Get it for the record, done nothing right. And then look at number 29, housing. Look at number 30, housing. Fuck housing! Fuck Mid Valley Tiny Home Village, you stupid cunt, you're Walgoloski. Yeah, 271-280.25, come on, Soto, help that dumb bitch count. And then we go to the conflict of interest with Mr. Price. Item 31 and 32, fuck item 31 and 32 for the record. And by the way, look at this shit on fucking City of Los Angeles versus Crescent Apartment. Where the fuck is Judge Carter? Put some action to your motherfucking words and get these niggers to do their part and participate to get all the homeless off the goddamn motherfucking streets in which you failed like your mayor, that dumb Olympic bitch in Paris.
General public comment?
Now, as far as I understand, Brandon Burke versus Ohio, 395 U.S., 444, 1969. Well, that dumb kike up there, Bloomfield, shows that food in his mouth. How far is the nigger going to? Yeah. This is what we're going to do to the niggers, a dirty nigger. Why are you eating in front of me, Bob Bloomfield, you kike? Save America, nigger! Let's go back to constitutional betterment. You heard all the complaints, you heard all the issues why the protesters were so upset because Kaike Bob and the other kikes in here don't want to stop the killing of the children of Hamas. From seed to seed, who will it be? Is it the Jew-Jews who destroy our homeland like America? Vote for Trump, Kamala KK cunt. If that's what you want, another dumb dumb 46, go ahead and stroke it. Suck a dick.
Good afternoon. Which items would you like to speak to?
I'd like to speak on agenda item 1, 2 through 19, 26 to 35.
So you have three minutes for the items?
General comment.
And one general, one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Okay, first of all, agenda item 36, that's a really bad idea. It's about the Build LA program that they're trying to expedite permits for Build LA. Build LA is not a government program. What they're doing is illegal, unlawfully developing real estate. None of those people in there own that. I don't know who the fuck Build LA is, but I have a feeling they're all going to prison over that. There's, I noticed, that's not any good, I was gonna address, address agenda items 2 through 19 as a group. It's about declaring nuisance properties. I think that's ridiculous that you're trying to blame the property for the nuisance or for the cleanup or for whatever that is. You're not supposed to blame the property, you're supposed to blame the person that created the nuisance. It's not, hey, let's free Palestine, let's blame the land. You're supposed to blame the people that did that. That's for 2 through 19, definitely, no. You need to figure out anybody in the government who endorsed the development of that property, the person who said they own that, the people who were there, the people that created the nuisance, those are the ones that paid for it, not the property. And there's no lean on the property for that. Somebody should, if you really want to do something, send somebody to jail for creating the nuisance. Agenda item 26 to 35, REAP properties. The city and the attorney and the law enforcement and Department of Justice needs to investigate the illegal use of REAP to sell real estate by the city council members. The number of properties under REAP is very limited, and the reasons that a property could go under REAP are very limited, and it seems like you're just killing people trying to sell their property. Because that is actually what's going on. Agenda item number one, streets and highways don't pay for BID. I want to make something real clear that people in the city really need to know, the people working in the city council really need to know. The United States government doesn't own any transportation infrastructure. The city doesn't own any transportation infrastructure, and the state of California doesn't own any transportation infrastructure. They don't own any roads, highways, ports, bridges, stairways, walkways. They don't own any of that. Mostly, I do. And I'm, you're not to be spending the money from the states and highways or blaming them for that.
General public comment?
Okay, yeah, I see that you guys have been out for a month and that this, you got a lot of bullshit here as usual. Something about they're attacking Jewish people holding real estate conventions in Beverly Hills or something, yeah. None of those people own any of it, and I wouldn't allow you people to spend money out of the, what is that, civil rights and human, human, yeah, there's, there's no humans in this city council at all. None of you people in here are human, not a single one of you. And for you guys to try to spend money out of there, it just doesn't seem right. Also, as cheaters of unclaimed monies, no, it's not going into the city budget. They didn't own that money in the first place, it was stolen in the first place.
Speaker, your time has expired.
You've never worked for your life? Bloomingfield, come on, man, really? John 2:16, why are you making a marketplace? And that we're going to 25 on this one. You're Jewish. Why are you making a marketplace of us, our father's house? These people do not want that in there, and you're supposed to represent them. Make it clear, what you guys do affects the community. It's not your interests. You got voted in to represent their interests. The Gaza Strip? When Behamin came in, Prime Minister of Israel, and said, "We are not done until we acquire that strip," you should have backpedaled and got away from him. That means he is doing genocide until he acquires that property. Yet you're backing him up. It's upsetting. Monica Rodriguez, Emilia Padilla, you guys sitting on the side not even listening to the people? Listen to the people that, it's being attacked. Lee, you're on the same point, I don't know why you're talking over in the corner. Because this is part of your thing. Genocide should not be anywhere in this world unless your families are on the line. Don't tell me, send my kids to war. God bless you all, you guys are lost with this. Kevin DeLeon, just let it go, man. You were lost a long time ago. Monica Padilla, Emilia Padilla, Monica Rodriguez and Emilia Padilla, same one and the other. Mini me. 9080 Woodman Avenue. We have a homeless encampment in that Starbucks store that we're supposed to be getting. What are you doing for them? Just go to public comment, city attorney, before you cut me off. 9080. And 9120, you're about to have a groundbreaking thing. Are you gonna clean 9080 right before that so the newspapers don't get in?
Speaker, your time has expired. Next caller?
All right, if we can call the roll to reconvene.
Yes, Mr. President. Bloomingfield, DeLeon, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Tricorian, Lee, McOster, Padilla, Park, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavski, 12 members present and recording, Mr. President.
All right, what's before us? We are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.